Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming, welcome. My name is Larry Petrack. I'll be the moderator tonight for the Columbia Heights School District Candidate Forum. And I think we're going to start now. We're missing one, but hopefully they will show up here shortly. But we'll begin. And the format here is I've got a list of predetermined questions. They can have the benefit of seeing the questions ahead of time, but I'll be asking these questions, and then hopefully I'll do my best to rotate it so I don't have the same person called on first or last. And we're going to try to limit the responses to 90 seconds. I've got my timers up front here. Bill's going to hold up the sign, and you'll have the opportunity to see that, too. So we'll begin. First question we have here is, tell us briefly about yourself and why you're a candidate for the Columbia Heights School Board of Education. We're just going to start here, Holla, and we'll just go down the line there.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Holla Samari, and I'm running for school board here because I believe that students in this district need proper representation from someone who understands diversity and knows and understands education and knows what needs to be done to get results. As a parent, a Columbia Heights resident, and a former school board member, and an instructional specialist with a doctorate in education, I know what needs to be done to create favorable conditions so we can close the achievement gap. If elected to the board, I'll work on making our district more rigorous and more inclusive so residents in Columbia Heights, Hilltop, and Southern Fridley will want to become proud Highlanders. And my goal, if I sit on the board, is to get all our students wanting to be in here and get everybody else to want to be on a waiting list, dying to be a Highlander. I would work on revising the mission and vision to explicitly address student diversity. We'd make policies and decisions with student diversities in mind. A big goal is to attract and retain more diverse, highly qualified staff who can serve as relevant role models for our students. And by embracing diversity, building community, we can close the achievement gap.
Thank you. Scott?
Good evening. My name's Scott Bredell. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Appreciate it. I've lived in the district about 20 years. I'm married. I have currently one student in the district at, in high school. I have, my daughter graduated now at the University of Minnesota. My spouse, her and all her siblings, went to this district, and so they've lived here much, much longer than I have, and that's why I'm here. I went to a small community high school in Morris, Illinois. I went to a public university, Illinois State University, majored in chemistry. I attended the John Marshall Law School in Chicago. And I've worked for various companies around the country. And I currently work as a patent attorney at Medtronic. Previously, I was a member of the Columbia Heights School Board for 10 years. I ran or was on the board two full terms, two four-year terms, and then was appointed for a two-year term to fill out someone else's term who had to leave the district. And I'm running for school board to help complete or redefine our mission and vision. And I was here when this mission, vision was put into place, and I'd like to see it through and help with the next round of what we're going to be doing. And I'm here, I just want to do what I can to maintain strong schools in our community and make the best decisions that I can for the students of the district. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Tanisha?
Yeah.
You didn't get the benefit, I believe, of the question that was asked, but I'll repeat the question for you.
Thank you.
Question was, tell us briefly about yourself and why you are a candidate for the Columbia Heights School Board of Education.
Okay. First off, I apologize for being late. I'm Tanisha Kirk, and I would say I'm a former employee of Columbia Heights Public Schools. I worked there for three years, one year at the middle school and two at the high school. Currently and for the last five years, I've been a juvenile correctional officer at the Hennepin County Home School. I work with juvenile delinquents, and I've been working with troubled youth for over 12 years, almost 13 years. So just all of that experience. Also, I went to Northwestern College, University of Northwestern in Roseville, and my major was criminal justice. So my main thing is, I just know that if we take preventative measures, then we can avoid a lot of conflict, a lot of issues that are going on right now in the public school systems. I believe, as a parent also of Columbia Heights Public Schools, I have insight on both ends of the spectrum, as a parent and as a former employee. And I believe that what I know in my experience, I could bring a lot to the table. That's it.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Lane. I grew up in Heights, and I graduated from Heights. I currently live in Heights, and my daughter goes to school at Heights. My oldest son is 12. He goes to school at St. Anthony. And through the course of raising my two children, we have experienced three different school districts, Minneapolis, St. Anthony, and Columbia Heights. And each of those districts has their own strengths and their own weaknesses. There's a reason I choose Heights for my daughter. She was accepted for open enrollment at St. Anthony, and I declined. I want her here for a reason because of our strengths. But I'm not running for school board because of the things that we do well. I'm running for school board because of the things that we need to change. A couple people have talked about that they would update the strategic roadmap, et cetera. The school district as a whole is already on the verge of updating our strategic roadmap, which would mean changes to our mission and our core values and our strategic directions. And we're already about to do that as an entire district. It's going to happen whether individual board members want to work on it or not. So that's why, right now, even though this is a one-year term, I would love to get in and make some changes to that, just like everybody else. But I would like people to know that it's something that is going to happen, no matter what, so.
Thank you. Natty?
I am Natty Severson. I grew up in Maple Grove, Minnesota, and I'm a graduate of Osseo High School. After that, I went to the University of Minnesota and studied geography and psychology. Had an opportunity to study overseas for a while as well. I got married, and I've been married to my husband, who's a middle school engineering teacher for 16 years, and we have three kids. They're an eighth grader and a sixth grader at Columbia Academy, and they're doing great and loving it, and a fifth grader at North Park, and she's also loving it. She was in the pilot group for the learning studios up there, and we've learned a lot by her participation there. We love our town, and we love our schools, and we love the kids in this community, and our families made a home here, and I believe in this community. My experience in both schools and the community have led me and prepared me for serving on this school board now. I've served as the PTA president. I've been on the Vote Yes Committee Board. I've been parts of many community projects, parent boards, and I know our community. But I haven't just participated. I've been a leader, and I've successfully rallied, unified, and mobilized people toward goals with really successful outcomes. And I believe that I can transfer that to the school board. And I've done that by showing that I'm an honest, smart, highly communicative leader who listens to people and gains their trust. And those are the skills that will make me a good addition to this board. My end game is to, by the time I leave the school board, would be to ask, to be to ask, to be to have all parents asking the question, why would I send my kids to any school but Heights?
Thank you. Okay, question number two is, what specific experience or knowledge do you have that would contribute to governance of this educational institution? We'll start with Scott.
What specific educational or other experience?
What specific experience and/or knowledge do you have that would contribute to the governance of this educational institution?
Thank you. As I mentioned before, I've been on the school board two terms, two full terms, was elected two full terms, and also was appointed for a two-year term to fill a vacancy. So I've been a board member for 10 years here in Columbia Heights. Some of those years were as chair. I've been vice chair. I think I was every officer on the board at one point in time. But also, I'm a parent. I have one child still in the high school. My daughter graduated a few years ago, is now at the University of Minnesota. So I have a vested interest in this district. I live in the district. I care about the district, and I support what the district's done over the last years. And I don't know, I feel like that my experience as a board member and being involved in the community makes me suitable for carrying on the board.
Thank you. Tanisha?
Can you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Okay, sure. What specific experience or knowledge do you have that would contribute to your governance of this educational institution?
I would say, without sounding redundant, basically, my personal work experience here at Columbia Heights Public Schools will probably give me the best advantage, understanding and knowing the inner workings of the school, the relationships that I've already built with the teachers, with the students, with the families of this community. And then again, also on the other end of the spectrum, being a parent here in Columbia Heights, I had a daughter that was at the middle school, and I had two children that were at the elementary level. So just understanding and experiencing both sides of the coin, I believe that that experience is what I can bring to the table.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I work for the county, so it's a very large organization. We recently have transformed our department from being, you know, eight to 4:30, everybody in the office, Monday through Friday, clock watchers, to a very results workplace environment where we have a flexible schedule. We can work really anytime, as long as we get our 40 hours in, and we are judged on our results, which I would think would make the public that we serve happier because we are not just, you know, playing solitaire all day, but we're actually accurately assessed on the work that we do. And I know that change in a large organization is slow and takes time, but I think it's very similar to running a school district. You have things that need to change, and sometimes it's not always best to have the people at the top who have been here forever kind of maintaining status quo. Sometimes you do need fresh blood from outside and from the ground up, from the community, to have a community-run school board who implements the changes that the community is ready for. So I think that I have a lot of experience implementing massive changes, and I could bring that to our district.
Thank you. Natty?
Yeah, I think I do have some things to bring to this board, and I think primarily it starts with my already working at a nonprofit. I'm already familiar with how boards work. I've participated on them. I've been in them. I understand communities. I organize volunteers as a part of my job. So I think having that is a great place to start. And honestly, successfully, I've already successfully transferred those skills into leading within our district. I've shown that I can be an influencer who isn't afraid to ask for change, but also creates positive relationships with the people around them as they do so. Ask administrators, ask staff, ask teachers, ask other parents about my reputation. Ask around in the community. People will probably have good things to say. And that's because I've shown that I want to lead, and I want to do so in a way that rallies people together, that shows value for all people and all the kids in the school. And I think that's important. Yeah, again, showing I can rally and unify people as a leader.
Thank you. Next question is, how do you perceive the role of the school?
It's my turn to answer.
Oh, I'm sorry, Holla. I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's okay.
Jump ahead.
All right. So, yeah, what prepares me, what I bring to the table, are numerous things. I am a parent to four kids. I've been a Columbia Heights resident for 15 years. I have specific school board experience. I've had that, I've done that for three years. I work for Minneapolis Public Schools. I am a teacher, but right now I'm working as an instructional specialist, observing and coaching teachers, and working at the district level and school levels to improve achievement and to close the achievement gap by improving the achievement of everybody. My master's is in teaching, and my doctorate is in education and instructional leadership with a focus on education technology. And right now, I'm working on my principal license. So other than just rattling off a bunch of credentials, my point is that I know how schools work. And I'm obviously from a diverse background. I walk around and get accused of being a terrorist or a foreigner, and I need to go home. I know what it feels like to be a minority, and I know what we need to do to make a positive experience for all of our members here.
Thank you. I apologize.
That's okay.
Thank you for keeping me on task there. Okay, now we'll jump to number three question. How do you perceive the role of school board members? And we'll start with Tanisha.
Are you asking, just in general, the role of a school board member or the current ones that we have?
No. It would be, just in general, what do you think the role of a school board member retains?
I think there's a huge responsibility because I believe that it starts at the head, making sure that we're all unified. And if we are, everything that we want to carry out, everything that we want to implement, as long as we're unified, everyone underneath will follow suit. I believe that the school board has a very powerful voice that a lot of people aren't aware of. And I believe that if the communication is there between the school board and the schools and the teachers and the families, we can definitely get a lot done because we have the power to hear the voice of our community. We have the power to hear the voice of the teachers, of the students, and based on whatever their concerns are, we have the power to make that change. So I believe that's very key.
Yeah, thank you. Jennifer?
The school board ultimately is the entity that is responsible for running the entire district. So financially, legally, any issues that come up, the buck stops with the school board. I think that individual members are elected by the public to serve the public, and it's very important, I think, that they meet with community members and teachers and, you know, families and see what the concerns are of the actual people who elected them, and then be a voice for them and bring those concerns to the table. I don't believe that all the board members need to vote yes to something or no to something to be unified. I think that board members should vote their consciences and do what they think is right for the district. Once the board has made a decision and a vote has happened, then everyone, whether they voted for it or not for it, would, of course, you know, move forward as a whole to represent the district. But I strongly believe in a community-run school board. I think that there is some concern with some people that our school board is not viewed as being strong enough, or that is viewed as sort of being just the ones who rubber-stamp what their policies that their employee actually writes. I am a strong believer that the school board members should be the ones writing the policies and making the big decisions, and then relaying that direction to the superintendent, who then is responsible for running the school.
Okay, thank you. Natty?
Yeah, I think, as any board, it should function primarily as a role of visionary leadership. I think that boards in general function to create vision and direction for any organization. I think a part of that is listening, especially on a school board, is listening to what the community does have to say. I think going out, hearing people, meeting them, being active in the community is a huge part of that, but also equipping staff and teachers and administrators to carry out that vision, to have a team effort toward moving toward the vision of our schools and really doing it in a way that functions effectively for the benefit of our students.
Okay, thank you. Holla?
My perception of the role of school board is that the board needs to create direction, and that direction needs to be determined based on industry-based best practices and what the stakeholders want. All of that needs to be molded together to set goals and broad parameters. And my metaphor for what a board is to a school is, the board is like the head of the ship deciding where we're going to go, the captain deciding which way we're going to go, and then everybody else who works in the school will be people rowing and doing the hard work. So my understanding of what the role of a school board member is, is that we don't micromanage. We work together to create policies, and that's why I was talking about we need to work on the mission and vision, because if we don't set things as being specific goals, they won't be worked towards. So we need to set broad parameters for the employees we've hired to actually do their work. We need to let them do it, trust the people we hire, and support them in the work they do.
Thank you. Scott?
Yes, the actual purpose of a school board is governance, is the word easy for me to say, that comes to mind, but it is, as others have said, you know, the school board sets the policies, right? The school board sets the direction, the vision, the goals, and allows others to implement those the best way they see fit. You know, I'm not an education expert, granted. You know, I went to school, and I have a lot of education, but I'm not an expert in education. I like to think I do have common sense, and I also like to think I'm a pretty good listener. And I think those are a couple of things that school board members need. They need to listen. They need to be contemplative. They need to do their homework. They need to get the business of the school district done. Only school board can approve financial commitments, contracts, things like that. Yes, the staff and superintendent brings it in front of the school board, but it is ultimately the school board who is responsible for that, leaving, as others have said, the day-to-day operations of the school district with the superintendent and staff.
Thank you. Okay, next question is, part of the strategic roadmap, the Columbia Heights School District is committed to do school well. Please highlight programs that Columbia Heights Public Schools do well, and what programs could be improved or added. And we'll start with Jennifer.
I'm not going to talk about the specific programs. I'm going to talk about, since you mentioned the strategic roadmap, the actual roadmap itself. I think that we have language in there that talks about, a lot about reputation management and creating an image of pride. I know that we have a director of communications, who I am fond of, who was hired and does a lot of PR. I'm not happy with that. I think that we, as a district, have a problem with not enough of our actual community members attending our schools. A lot of our community members do choose to go elsewhere, and like she was saying, the goal, of course, would be to get them to come here. And the way to do that is to solve the problems that are causing them to leave. Just a good PR campaign and a lot of advertising might recruit and bring in parents from Minneapolis or other cities, but it is not going to retain our own community. I think that we need to have our director of communications working first and foremost on communication, secondly, on advertising, and right now, I believe it's the other way around. I think that we don't want to create an image of pride. We want to actually have our school district running so well that our community is already so proud that they're not just there to advertise and promote, rah rah, we love our school. They actually show that they love our school by keeping their children here from K through 12. So I think that, again, changes to the strategic roadmap should be about the things that will retain our families, not little tweaks to specific programs.
Thank you. Natty?
It's hard not to respond to that, knowing that I think I'm demonstrating pride in our community, and I want to see my kids through, and I, all respect to you, we're friends, so. But it's hard not to respond to that, knowing that that's of value to me, keeping my kids here, and we're doing that. I have seen many great programs as we participated in the Columbia Heights schools. I'd point first to my daughter, who's found great success in the learning studios at North Park. She was part of the pilot group, and she's finishing fifth grade there, and she's flourished there. She went from met her academic standards to exceeds in all categories over the course of that. She has flourished socially. She's loved it. They've taught her to come out of her shell through that experience. I think the STEAM initiatives that are happening in the various schools, I know specifically North Park, and now the academy, my boys who are at the academy are loving learning and integrating technology into their everyday learning, and that's been a huge success. I'm curious, as a board member, to find out more about ILP function. I think that's one area where I would want to know more about, as a parent and as a board member, how ILPs are working at the middle school now that they've implemented those things. How are they pushing kids, wherever they are in their academic progress, to something greater? And if those are working, it would be great to see those implemented at all age levels.
Thank you. Holla?
Some things that I feel like are working well are advanced academics. There are a lot of options for students at the high school, for example, to, they have a lot of options to, you know, they can take AP classes, they can start doing college in the schools or early college with an Oka Hennepin. So there are a lot of options in that respect. And a lot of our students can do well, but my big question is, what do the numbers show about the non-white students? We need to do something different to address the diversity issue we have. That's why I believe we need to embrace diversity so we can build true community that really encompasses everybody, and that's how we can close the achievement gap. Again, I keep coming to that because that's really how to do it. We need to build systems, find ways to meet the needs of all our students. And then there's the other issue, of course, that too many residents are taking their kids outside the district. We need to really find out what the reasons are, do some problem solving there, and find out what the reasons are and address them, because we need our city, we need our schools to be filled with our students, and then everybody else gets on a waiting list to become a Highlander.
Thank you. Scott?
I'm probably going to repeat some things that have already been said, but they're worth repeating. I think we do have strong advanced placement courses here. We have PSEO. That's where students can get college credit for, and high school credit at the same time. Our arts program is outstanding in the school district. We've had a lot of award winners here in the arts program. Our plays, we've had a lot of award-winning plays and actors and actresses in the plays. We have engineering in the middle school at Columbia Academy. I think that's an outstanding program. I think some of the things we could work on, again, is understand, as others have said, why not all of our residents send their children to the district? And I think another thing is, if we could do something to get more participation in sports. I know some sports are really, really popular, but others are not so popular. So whatever we can do to enhance the experience for our students in our schools, have different experiences and meet other people, so, thanks.
Thank you. Tanisha?
I guess, to piggyback also off of what Jen said, honestly, when it comes to the strategic roadmap, to focus on that first would kind of be futile. It's like, we have to go before that. We have to figure out why our residents, why our families aren't sending our kids to Columbia Heights Public Schools, why they're sending them elsewhere. And as being an employee, I did get kind of a firsthand sight of what was going on. We first have to address the discipline. We first have to address holding our students accountable academic-wise, behavioral-wise. All of that plays a role into being able to promote these programs. These are all wonderful programs, but as a parent, if that's all I see and then what I hear are the rumors of, you know, how the culture and the climate is in a school, it doesn't matter how good our programs are, I'm not going to feel comfortable sending my child. And that's coming from, like I said, what I've heard from parents, me personally as a parent. If I'm going to send my child somewhere, I need to know that that culture and that environment is going to be conducive to their learning. I need to know that they're not going to be distracted because other kids are acting out in the class, and we're not doing anything to kind of get that in order. So I think the first thing that we need to do before we shed the limelight on a strategic roadmap and everything that we have to offer, we need to address the issues that are going on in the school, and be realistic about them and be willing to change what's going on in the schools.
Thank you. The next question is, in the next three years, what are the greatest challenges you? Uh, the next question is, in the next three years, what are the greatest challenges facing public education in Minnesota, and also in our district? And we'll start with Nadia.
That's a grand question, the entire state of Minnesota, it's a pretty, uh, broad question, given the diversity in schools, but I'll give it a stab, I would probably say finances, right? Um, limited, um, funds create problems, and they create, um, lost opportunity, I think. Um, it's our job to do the best with what we have, though, as a school board. Um, specifically, um, as much as I, I hear people talking about, um, poor reputation and rumors, I've asked kids, and I'm not hearing those same stories across the board all the time. I know that there are different people who have struggles, but I think that happens in any place. Does that mean we don't need to make changes? Yeah, we need to make some changes, but when we talk about strategic roadmap, I'm in, I'm in favor of doing things like that, because I honestly don't think we'll move away from any problems unless we're moving toward a common goal. And I'd love to see the board be rallied around a common goal that takes us to something better, um, while we build on the good things that are happening and learn from the things that aren't as successful.
Thank you. Holla?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Uh, yes, uh, in the next three years, what are the greatest challenges facing public education in Minnesota, and also in our district?
Okay. So I don't believe that this district is entirely different than other districts in the Twin Cities, or at least in the first ring suburbs, or, uh, the inner cities that much. Uh, the number one problem, like was stated before, funding, funding is a big problem. Um, so it's, it's, it's a pie, and how much you decide to put towards what is the big issue. Uh, things that are big challenges that we have in front of us, again, the achievement gap, very serious problem. We need to meet the needs of all our students, and that doesn't mean stop the ones on top just so you can pull the ones on the bottom up. We need to keep all our students moving forward and improving while still closing the gap. So that means we need to look at those non-white students and improve their achievement at a rate that has not happened before. We need to make this change because our students don't have time. Um, and there, the, another big challenge is, uh, segregation. Our schools are becoming more segregated. I don't know how many of you have heard about the lawsuit that was made against the state, uh, about our, and it was about our schools. Our schools are becoming more segregated, what are we gonna do to fix that? Um, and then even when they're not segregated, what are we gonna do to address the needs of all our students, especially the ones who are underprivileged?
Thank you. Scott?
Um, I'm gonna echo, uh, some of what, uh, Holla said. Um, in terms of finances, you know, I, there's a couple ways to look at that, I, you know, I, my mother was a teacher, and there wasn't enough money 35 years ago, there's not enough money now, there never will, will be enough. It's a matter of priorities, what do you do with the money that you do have and have been granted, so, um, and that's one of the things that, uh, school boards, as well as administrations wrestle with all over the state. Uh, I also agree that, um, in the next three years, the achievement gap, I agree, we have to raise everybody up, everybody, every student, we need to raise them up. There shouldn't be such an achievement gap, and it's, uh, not only the state of Minnesota, but it's all across the country, so those are what I see as the two biggest issues in the next three years.
Yeah, thank you. Tanisha?
Um, I would say, honestly, the challenges that I see facing our public school system, um, the biggest one that I see is the special ed programs. Um, just in general, I won't even just set aside this special ed department, but our standards, I feel, are not being raised for our children. I think that, over the years, um, because of all the different issues that our children face, um, our standards, we've become complacent with our standards being on the ground and not necessarily holding them to a higher bar, expecting more of our students. And I believe that when we expect more from our students, they're gonna do better. They'll perform well, um, and they'll meet our expectations. But right now, I just see that there is no balance between discipline and accountability and nurturing our students. I feel like we either tend to lean too far to the left or too far to the right, and there's no balance. And so I think if we continue to do that, focus just on, um, how can I put that? If we continue to focus on just one area and not find the balance of all the issues, like I said, with holding a standard, um, and like, um, Tim had mentioned, as far as finances, not just pouring into one thing, but making sure that we're finding the priorities and we're setting the right standards, um, then we could be successful.
Yeah, thank you. Jennifer?
Um, I think a lot of the challenges that districts, um, are faced with kind of start at, um, the federal and the state level. I see districts responding a lot to various changes in legislation, um, whether it be, you know, all-day kindergarten, or open enrollment, or various testing, you know, tests that have to happen, there's, um, with world's best workforce and stuff, we have all these, um, different, the school has to put together all these different plans for how they're gonna function as a district, and they have to combine all these various plans together sort of into one cohesive, um, working system just to keep the state happy. And so some of it can be, um, improved by, by changes to legislation, but I think open enrollment is one, when, like when we talk about segregation or problems with busing, um, open enrollment is a big one. I, on the one hand, I'm a fan of, of people being able to go wherever they think their child will, will get the best education, or, or they will get the best service. On the other hand, I, I truly believe that open enrollment, um, tears apart, um, communities. I, I don't think that people are leaving Columbia Heights just because Columbia Heights is not doing a good job. I think that they're leaving Columbia Heights because of open enrollment, and if you can go anywhere, you know, you're gonna go where you think it might be the best. Um, so unless you are, are, at the top of your game, you, with open enrollment, you, you will not retain families. So you either do away with open enrollment and you immediately get your community back, or you deal with open enrollment and you, you make sure you're at the top of your game, so.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, the next question is, how would you work with, uh, school board members to reach consensus when there's disagreement between school board members? We'll start with Holla.
So, when I sit here as a candidate and I list off and rattle off the list, the things that I want to do as a board member, um, I know full well that I can't get on there and make things happen, um, by forcing things, or by coming in in an aggressive way. Things have to happen by consensus, by discussion, and so when things, uh, when I have things I'm trying to push to make education better for our students, and it's just not coming through, what I would do is I would use data, I would use evidence, I would use my influence, I would argue for it, I would pull out everything, because our students cannot wait. They need, they need things to be better for them. Um, so it's very important for a board to be cohesive and for people to work together, and I'm, I'm good at working as a team, uh, as a team member, and, uh, the important thing for a board is that no matter what the decision is that's made, everybody stands up united for the decision that was made.
Thank you. Scott?
Um, a school board is made up of six individuals elected by the public. They're not gonna agree on everything. I mean, they're six individuals, they have six individual decisions, so I think, um, to get absolute agreement all the time is impossible, it's probably not wanted necessarily, 'cause you wanna hear all points of view, and I would hope that the needed point of view, the view with the most common sense, the view that helps kids the most, is the one that wins out. But in the end, once the board votes, that's the board speaking. Individuals have a right to say what they want and vote the way they want, but in the end, once the board speaks in a majority vote, that's it. The issue's over, and the board moves on. So, um, you put your best foot forward, you speak your mind, you use persuasive argument, um, facts help sometimes, sometimes they don't. Um, that's just the way human beings are, and that's the way boards work. In the end, the majority rules.
Thank you. Tanisha?
Yeah, um, I would say it definitely starts with an open mind. Um, everyone on the board should be coming in with an open mind and not personal agendas. I mean, I know we're all gonna have ideas that we wanna bring to the table, but when you do that, you have to be considerate of other people's points of views. Um, and I would guess that the ideas that are being brought to the table, some of them may come from our community, so we would already have the aspect, um, from outside views, other people's opinions, so if there is a disagreement and we all aren't on the same, on the same accord, um, just, like I said, having an open mind, not shutting down when you're not getting your way, you're not being heard, um, considering all aspects, and considering the outside opinion, especially if we're expecting people to implement our decisions. We need to know what they feel about that, and that they're comfortable doing it, and that they're on board with us. Otherwise, whatever decision we're making is gonna be futile if we expect other people to implement it, and they're not on board.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Um, I wanna echo everything everybody else has already said about how to work with other adults. Um, specifically, though, what, what I think is that, um, having those discussions takes time, and, um, whether, whether you're, you're there arguing about it, or pushing forward, or showing your facts, or whatever it is, that process for each individual topic that a board has to address takes time. And so it's, from the board ma- um, board meetings that I've seen and the work sessions, um, I've, I've noticed that our board members have very little time to actually meet as a group and discuss anything. So, and they can't, they can't discuss things outside of, 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 they can't violate open meeting laws. So it's important, um, I think, for the board to have more work sessions, so that they can actually have more days where they're sitting together as a cohesive whole and having those discussions, um, so that they can more thoroughly talk about, um, the important issues, um, in front of our district.
Yeah, thank you. Nadia?
Yeah, I think it starts with, what does the word consensus actually mean? Um, it's this idea that we do have a dialogue, and we are six people, and I know this has been said, but I'll just reiterate it, we would be, a board of six people trying to make a decision on behalf of an entire group, so they're representing the group, and they need to have listening ears, they need to be in discussion, they need to, um, share their opinions, but in the end, it's coming together and making a choice for the benefit of the kids, and then moving forward in that choice in a way that enables change, enables growth, enables learning, enables our students. And, and in doing that in a healthy way, we're actually demonstrating, um, working as a team to the kids. They get to see adults functioning in a healthy way with one another, learning and growing from one another, and I think that's, that's a nice, it could be a really, really beautiful thing about the school board.
Yeah, thank you. Next question, um, how would you handle requests by an individual, special interest group, or a specific school that is under the preview of the school board? And we'll start with Scott.
So how would I handle a special request from a constituent?
An individual, special interest group, or a specific school that is under, not under the preview of the school board?
Um, you know, the, it's a tough question, in some ways, in some ways it's not. I mean, your, your initial thought is, you wanna listen, you wanna be polite, the truth of the matter is, is, at most, I think you can listen, as a, a single school board member, um, one can't decide or, or make any promises to anybody, I mean, it's the board as a whole, right? So you can listen to this individual and basically try not to respond and try not to, um, you know, make any representations that anything will be done, but I think, um, you would send it up the chain of command, and if it had to do with how the school district was being run, you would definitely get that person in touch with, uh, the superintendent, and then it would follow the chain of command. If it had to do with, um, you know, other school board members, then you would bring that to the chair of the school board, which is how I'd handle it.
Yeah. Uh, Tanisha?
Um, yeah, I'm not too privy on how everything is supposed to work, but if somebody from the community were to bring something to me that was of concern, or that they wanted implemented, or changed, um, I would definitely encourage them to raise awareness of the issue, um, and like he had stated, um, following the proper channels to get that concern or that issue, or a request voiced, um, to the superintendent, and then wait for it to come to the floor, um, to be discussed. But I would definitely, um, being that they came to me, I would get all the information on what they're trying to do, so that if it ever did come to the table, then I would be able to speak on their behalf. I would be able to speak with knowledge on what they want, and not just, you know, hearing it for the first time. So I guess in a nutshell, I would get all the information and direct them, um, to the right person, and then hopefully be able to advocate, um, for them if it's something that's beneficial.
Yeah, thank you. Jennifer?
Um, I think the fact of the matter is, in our district, parents and teachers and committee members are coming to our board members constantly with various concerns. And so even though, you know, that's not necessarily the role of the board, um, the fact of the matter is, our district isn't currently set up where we have like an Amz Muzban, or, or somebody else who is fulfilling that role. So a part of it is, yes, listening to them, finding out what the concerns are, um, so that you can keep track, because if these concerns keep happening over and over and over, um, they can be addressed. And, and then also referring the, the person or the entity, the group, whatever, to, you know, like he said, through the chain of command. I mean, they, people need to know that you're not gonna be the one who is there to solve all of their problems, that they, they are responsible for, for taking some ownership in what is their issue, and, and contacting the appropriate people within the district to get, um, those problems solved. Um, but I, but I think listening is, is very, very important. I think the board members should absolutely listen, whether, whether it's a, a board issue or not. Um, I have seen people come to the board and, and think that they're sort of at their place where it has risen to that level, where they think they need to come to the board with the problem, and I have, I've seen them be turned away because it wasn't the appropriate, um, place for them to address their concern. There's rules about what can be addressed when, and, um, I was not, I, I understand that they have to be turned away, but at the same time, there was no follow-up, um, regarding, um, what they should do instead, and I think that, that's unfortunate. I think we need to work better at a district at, um, at helping people with the next steps.
Yeah, thank you. Nadia?
Yeah, I, it's been said, so I don't wanna, um, be too redundant, but obviously, listening, showing respect, those are two important things, um, as we represent a board and the school district itself. We take, I take it as an opportunity to learn, um, to include it as another data point in decision-making, and then help, um, act as liaison to, um, direct people in the ways in which their opinions can be best heard, um, and best, um, metered out. Um, so I, I think just acting as a liaison to the appropriate channels would be a benefit, and, and I agree, I think we can do a better job of, of hearing, um, what the community has to say, and finding ways to equip the community for action.
Thank you. Holla?
Uh, this is actually some, a situation that I've been in before numerous times, when I was on the school board before. Um, so the, the way I've handled it is I listen to the person, uh, sometimes it's a parent, sometimes it's a different community member, just listen to the concern, and, uh, if it's something that I can't help them with, just on a personal level, I refer them to the right person and the, and the system. Um, just, you know, stick 'em, you know, refer them in the right direction, and if it's something that the board really does, uh, or could address, I would not make any promises, because myself, as a board member, I'm not the board, so I would, uh, you know, talk to the chairperson, if I felt like it was something that we could all benefit from, and our students would benefit from it, I would talk to the, the chairperson of the board, and see if we could have it added as an agenda, all the while not making any promises, because, again, a board member is not equal to the board.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, next question is, um, what is the relationship between social media, the community, and the position of a school board member? We'll start with, uh, Tanisha.
Relationship between school board, social media, and the community?
Yep. Yep. What is the relationship between social media, the community, and the position of a school board member?
I think as a school board member, there needs to be a strong understanding that when you are on that board, you represent that board. And anything and everything that you say is going to be observed. It could be used against you, it could be questioned. And so you just need to make sure that you are maintaining the integrity and whatever the mission is of the school board. And make sure that you're reflecting the school board in a positive light. That's honestly all I can say to that.
Okay. Jennifer?
Social media, like Facebook and Twitter, I tend to think of as, you know, things that people use for fun, not something that I associate with a school board necessarily. I see them as very separate. I do believe that board members are allowed to be human beings, they are allowed to have private lives, they are allowed to use their social media and their Facebook as any other human being. I don't think we're elected to a very part-time, you know, position just to give up all of our rights as a human being and pretend like we're perfect. At the same time, I do know a Minneapolis board member who I consider a friend and she has a wonderful website and Twitter and Facebook that she uses as a board member. And she is very professional about it. It represents the district well and it's her way to keep the public informed about very important school district matters. She has actually found that balance of how to use social media and Twitter extremely professionally as a board member. But I think that if you're gonna take that risk to do that, you do have a very large responsibility to do it well.
Thank you. Natty?
Yeah, I think that in terms of social media, I think people represent the organizations that they work for and they stand for, even in their private lives. I find it difficult to imagine my social media or any part of my life being separate from my role as a school board member. Do I think all of those things need to be a matter of public spectacle? No, but we should be using proper judgment as adults when we use social media, knowing that it's available for anyone to see. So I think we should act as representatives for our school board. I think that social media actually can be an incredible tool. It can be an incredible communication tool for communities. Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, Tumblr, all the things that people are moving toward allow us to communicate in a way that I don't necessarily think the school district has fully realized and could really capitalize on learning more from. So I think they're quite tied and I think we need to be careful how we're using them as people in general, but particularly as school members, school board members.
Thank you. Holla?
Social media nowadays creates a community outside of our geographic community. So anytime somebody is working for any organization, he or she needs to always be aware of the messages they're putting out. When you work for an organization, you have to know that when you say something negative, it reflects on your role as a school board member or as an employee, wherever you work. So a school board member would need to handle his or her social media account responsibly. Because that person is becoming the face of the organization with those friends or the rest of the people who are seeing it. And it can also be used in a positive way to disseminate the message. So it's a double-edged sword. I hate to use that expression now. But it can be used in a positive way and there just needs to be a high level of responsibility when using it.
Thank you. Scott?
I certainly can't disagree with what's already been said. For me personally, I thought, when I first was elected to the board, I thought my social media account was more risk than it was worth, so I terminated it. It wasn't that I was afraid of what I might say. I was afraid of losing control about what others might say on my social media account. So I decided, for me personally, just to terminate it and stay off it. Again, I thought the risks outweighed the benefits. However, it's 12 years later now and I do see a lot of benefit in social media with getting out positive messages. It has to be done correctly though, and I think if I were to look at it again, I'd want it to be sort of a, the board get together and figure out how you could collaborate on a board, social media site, or certainly a policy for sure. So that, and then figure out how you could police it to make sure that, you know, it was used responsibly in the right way to communicate.
Okay, thank you. Next question is, what is your personal experience with and commitment to E through 12 public school education? We'll start with Jennifer.
All my experiences just as a parent. So again, like I said before, I have a child who's 12, he's in middle school. My daughter is seven, she's in elementary school. Again, I think that unlike many of our current board members, the fact that as a parent, I have experienced these three very, very different school districts is a huge asset to me as a potential board member because I'm not sort of sheltered in the experience of only Columbia Heights public schools. We have some board members, many of them, who have only experienced Columbia Heights. And so I believe that is a weakness in a sense because then they don't see what's happening elsewhere. I think the fact that I have lived, being a parent, with children in these other districts is such a huge asset because then I can bring those strengths of two other districts to heights. And sometimes you do need to know what's going on elsewhere to improve what's going on here. And again, not to imply that everything here needs to change. But there are strengths elsewhere that we can bring here. The, for me, why my daughter goes here is because the strengths that we have here, you can't easily move to other districts. It's easier to fix the little things that we have to fix because our strengths are already solid.
Thank you. Natty?
I think the first and foremost way I've learned about K through 12 schools is by being a parent. I agree. There's a lot you learn by having your kids in the school and experiencing it firsthand. And as a parent, you feel the weight of what's happening, I think in a way that is difficult to replicate any other way. You feel it because it's for your child in that moment. And you keep saying, we need change now. Yeah, I agree. It's our kids that are at stake here and it will be someone else's kids. And I think secondly, being married to a teacher who is in Robbinsdale Middle School. My husband teaches engineering STEM classes and I've seen the difference in the way the districts do things. I think it's been beneficial to hear both wins and losses in both districts. I think I've learned the heart of a teacher more than I ever would, not being, having one so intimately in my life. I've learned the difficulties and the joys of doing that. And I think finally, by being a participant, I myself am a product of public schools. I grew up in Maple Grove, which is quite a different public school experience than the ones my kids are getting here. But I can tell you that I would choose this. I would choose this every time for my kids. We love the small-town community and we love the diversity here and I think it's great.
Thank you. Holla?
Well, start from the beginning of my experience. I'm a product of the public school system and I think I turned out okay. My kids, all of my kids, ever since kindergarten, have been in the public school system. The only one that's not is still four years old and he hasn't gone to kindergarten yet. So like what you were saying, Natty, it's, you feel it. You feel the weight of it because it's your kids and that's where it gets you the most and it just pushes you to want to make a difference. Another way that I'm involved with public education is that I am a teacher. I'm a high school biology teacher. I worked with Minneapolis Public Schools doing that. And I'm currently working with Minneapolis Public Schools as an instructional specialist. I coach and observe teachers. And like I said earlier, I work at the district and school levels to move student achievement forward and close the achievement gap. And we have an office for blackmail student achievement to address those specific concerns that are of issue there. So I coach and supervise teachers and I'm working on my principal license right now so I can be a principal in a public school. So my, I feel like my relationship with public schools is very holistic. It's all around and I'm in it, I'm in the trenches and I know what needs to be done to make things better for students.
Thank you. Scott?
I'm also a product of public schools, but I ended up in law school, so I don't know what that says. But I attended K through 12 in Illinois and, you know, the experience is not that much different than what my children have gone through within the Columbia Heights public schools. So I agree with everybody that as a parent, going all the parent-teacher conferences, all the events, the sporting events, plays, et cetera, you get immersed in the culture of the district and the schools. Each school kind of has their own culture and you learn and understand and, you know, help your kids learn and teach, teach them to be responsible citizens. And I also participated as a parent in the curriculum, what is it, the Parent Curriculum Advisory Council before I was on the board. And of course, as a school board member, and the other thing I'll put a plug in, my mother was a elementary ed teacher for 35 years in Illinois. So I remember her bringing papers home every night to grade and always telling us that, "Education, education, education."
Thank you. Tanisha?
Like I mentioned before, my experience comes from being a parent. I have an 11th grader and she is, like Jen stated, she's at St. Anthony. I have a 6th grader who is also at St. Anthony. And then I have a 4th grader who is at Valley View and a kindergartner who will be going to Valley View for 1st grade. So bringing that experience to the table as a parent from different districts as well as this one. I would say also being the employee, working, just having that advantage of seeing both sides of the spectrum, being able to empathize with parents, understanding how frustrating it is, trying to be involved in all of the challenges that life has. I mean, I understand that and so I'm willing to commit to finding a way that we can get parents engaged without them feeling overwhelmed. I would say also just understanding the discipline aspect. Like I said, accountability, holding our students accountable, having the experience on both ends of the spectrum, getting a call because, you know, one of my children is a little chatty in class. And then, you know, also having to deal with behavioral support as an employee. So I would say, because I have that experience, those are the things that I would definitely want to implement change on.
Thank you. We have one last question. It's actually a two-part question. You think our district is equally, or currently equitably supporting all students. And what should be done to close the achievement and opportunity gaps among white students and students of color? We'll start with Natty.
Can you repeat the first part of the question?
Sure. You think our district is currently equitably supporting all students. And then the second part is what should be done to close the achievement and opportunity gaps among white students and students of color?
I think the heart of the district is to support all the students equitably. I think on a day-to-day level, that probably plays out differently in every classroom with every teacher and every school with the unique school culture. But I think the heart of the district is to do that. And that's something I really appreciate about living in Columbia Heights, that my kids can experience real diversity with so many cultures and languages represented. It's an opportunity for them to be exposed to the world all in one day that they can't get in another place. I think my main goal academically would be to find a way to encourage all students to move forward from where they're at, regardless of their race or their religion. I think part of that is improving that achievement gap, lessening that for all students. Because I think as we push kids, regardless of where they come into things academically or ethnicity or their religious background, that they can all grow and they can all be pushed. And we can find unique ways to do so, beginning with opportunities like individualized learning plans. How can we know each kid well enough to know their needs and push them forward as unique people outside of their ethnicity, their race, and their educational background coming into the schools? And how do we make them prepared and ready for what comes after high school for them?
Thank you. Holla?
So I believe everybody has their heart in the right place. But no, I don't believe that this district is really meeting the needs of all students equitably. In order to meet all their needs, we need to really, truly embrace our diversity. And that means we need to stop pretending like everybody's the same. We need to do things differently, we need to do things with diversity in mind. We need to change the mission and vision to explicitly address diversity. When we do that, then we can have our goals aligned to what we're really trying to do and to the goals and to the end results that we're looking for. We need to attract and retain more diverse, highly qualified staff so they can serve as relevant role models for our students. We need our students to see people who work with them, who are like them, who they can believe that they can, who they believe they can be like when they go to college. We need to also work on the curriculum. We need to make it more relevant. And that does not mean, oh, we need to teach about different cultures. It's a lot more than that. We have to teach our students' curriculum in a way that allows them to see things through a different cultural lens. And so that is gonna take some training for our teachers. There's a lot of things we can do, but we need to align the vision and mission first to explicitly address diversity. That's the only way we can line up our goals. Because when you set out to go somewhere, you can't just get out on the road and start driving and be like, oh yeah, let me see where I end up. You have to have the end in mind. And unless we specifically make the goal to address all our students' needs, it's not gonna happen.
Thank you, Scott.
Maybe I'm seeing this a little bit differently, but being on the board and being involved in the school district for all these years, my feeling always was that every child was being treated in an equitable way. In other words, everyone, every child has an equitable opportunity to get a world-class education within the district. Yes, I know there are challenges in the district, no doubt. But I think this district, and I know many of the teachers, administrators in this district, you're right, their hearts are in the right place. And I know that it isn't without effort and working extremely long hours and with dedication. That, that's what I've seen. So I would view it as every child has an equitable opportunity to get an outstanding education. Addressing the second part, what to change, do about the achievement gap? I wish I had a magic bullet. I think all of us here wish they had a magic bullet. Doing the same thing and expecting different results is not gonna work. So I support trying different things. I understand children, as well as adults, learn differently. So we have to keep, whether it's individual learning plans or other types of things. And I'll rely on the experts in curriculum and education to educate me on some different things to try.
Thank you. Tanisha?
The answer to the first question, if everyone is being supported, no. I don't believe that everyone is being equally supported. I don't think, I don't feel like the diversity of the student population is being reflected in those that service the students, whether it's teachers, administration, behavioral support staff. There was a time when there was support, but currently now there is none as far as African-Americans being in a position of behavioral support like there was before. And I believe that we have to be realistic, that we are a first-rank suburb. We're not Mounds View, we're not St. Anthony, we are Columbia Heights and that is right outside of Minneapolis. So we're going to have a lot of Minneapolis students coming to our school. And we need to be able to reflect that in our staff and our administration so that we know how to to be able to reflect that in our staff and our administration so that we know how to deal with them, how to service them, how to provide resources for them in any area of struggle. And another thing I believe that will help with closing the gap is having an open mind, once again, being open to hear the ideas of people who are familiar with that population, people who have experienced, I grew up in Minneapolis Public Schools, K through 12, and so I have that experience, and I believe that if there's many people from that background, they can contribute.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I believe that our school district does a really good job with the students at the top, and does a really good job with the students at the bottom. We have a lot of special-needs kids and their parents send them to Heights, you know, for a reason. I think what Scott said is right on, that we give everyone, they have an equitable opportunity to do well. I don't tend to have a problem with the education that our school district provides. I think that when it comes to things like closing the achievement gap, it's more about getting all the other students in the middle and helping each and everybody be accountable for their learning. I know personally, again, as a parent, in another district, when we go to conferences and we get the testing scores in that district, they'll say, oh, your child is, you know, above all these other kids statewide, and above all these other kids, you know, on these tests, and you, as a parent, might think your child is a genius, and the school district says, no, they're struggling, they're not doing well enough, we want them to do better. And so then you, as a parent, are like, oh, okay, what else can we do at home to, you know, make sure that they're meeting the expectations of the school district? Versus, what I've noticed in Heights is it tends to be a little bit more, hey, your student is doing really well on these tests, good job, you know, and there's not that extra push. I think that with increased accountability of everybody, of the students, of the parents, of the teachers, increased communication, use of technology, high expectations, I think that these are the things that need to happen behind the scenes that will push our students forward that extra step to have them do better.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the School Board Candidate Forum. I'd like to thank the candidates, and I'd like to thank the community for participating tonight, or listening, I should say, and don't forget to vote. Thank you.[1793.41]